So this would give you the flexibility that basically when we get back looking at the cash reserves and tying in, taking a look at your budget to see where you're currently at on expenditures, to see if you're, see if you're at a break even, or basically before cuts are made, if they're required, just tying that into, into the required amount that you wanna, you wanna finance.
When would we be assuming to potentially do this one? If I look right, it's fairly soon?
Yes, I would, I would probably recommend, and this will tie into looking at tax warrants for next year. If you issue, this bond issue, the shore up, you have that infusion of cash, that reduces the amount that you have to issue as tax warrants. And you could only, you'd only wanna issue those maybe for six months, and then issue the bonds, and then pay off those warrants mid-year.
Yeah, because it'll be twenty, so we're gonna stay at 1.7 until 2022 versus basically a year.
Yes.
Right, I mean, we're basically gonna extend that out one more year to gain our $2 million before we have another big drop off of those, the other GO bonds that are being paid off with that.
Well, you can, only, yeah. But you could issue another bond in 22, actually issue it for the first payments under this scenario, that you start paying in, in basically the budget year 23. You would take your payments back up to the, the current level.
Okay, so this is, I'll test your memory here. I'm struggling with that. So it seems like when, when we talked about the previous, the 2019 bond.
Yeah.
I thought, or the way I remembered it, was we were gonna have stability to be the same again in 2020.
Yeah, she would.
So now we've lost them now, or no?
No, no, we haven't. What you would do is, depends on how you wanna structure the GO bond. If, if you don't wanna, the one reason I would probably recommend paying this off over a short term is, you could probably issue this as non-rated, or we could, Standard and Poor's for school corporations also have what they call the programmatic rating, which is if you have your maximum debt service payment, if you have state aid that you're receiving, is twice as much as your maximum payment on your debt service, you get a double A plus programmatic rating. Now, that doesn't carry the weight in the bond market like the underlying rating, the double B plus, double B plus where you're currently at. So you could issue something, get the programmatic rating, and sell it. It's, it doesn't, like I said, carry the weight, but what you could do is leave room in 2021 and 2022 if you wanted to issue another lease rental bond for the 5.3 million. So it all depends on the plan moving forward and your, and your capital needs.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just to illustrate it, we can, what if, we can adjust that.
Is that the only way we could do it, whatever it is, a student lease corporation, instead of passing it around to the bar?
Yeah. Then on the next page is the combined, the detail, the, the graph, gives you the payments for your existing, gives the solar project, and then it illustrates $2 million taxable GO, how that would be structured, and that can change. Then back, under some supplemental information, is just the amortization schedule for the illustrated GO bonds at $2 million, and that where the interest rate were estimating 2.65 to 3.75 percent on the interest rates, but we've got a cushion in there of about three quarters of 1 percent, and that's taxable bond issues, or interest rates.
This would be taxable?
Yes.
Interest rates?
Yes.
And you're saying that the taxable rate is three quarters of a percent higher?
Well, we're just then higher than the current rate. That's still higher than the tax exempt rates in the market.
Based off our current rating?
Yes.
No matter whether it's in or not, we're, it'd be approximately three quarters of a percent higher.
Yeah. Then on the next schedule, wanted to give you a schedule of your fund balances. And we started with 2014 through 2018, and what we've included under that first category, and I think it was brought up, this is really what Standard and Poor's is going to look at in evaluating where your reserves are at. And you can see that the trend, you were really 14, 15, and 16, in 17 even, good shape, and then it dropped down in 2018 down to 813,000. And 19, any idea? That's something you'll wanna look at. And the reason, taking a look at that is, is how much do you really want to, if you would issue the taxable GO bonds, to get this to a level that moving forward, you've kind of replenished that moving forward. Now, what you need to do to issue those is you have to itemize prior capital expenditures, the detail on what you've spent, if you have to go back two years, if you have to go back three years, you have to detail those capital expenditures.
So that would be any capital expenditure that was not, like an overrun from a project?
No, it can't be, yeah. It's out of, out of your operations, your general fund, something that the corporation has paid.
Okay. And I probably missed this, how far back can you go?
You go back, really, yeah.
So if we had a water leak, I don't know how many, maybe that's first few key months, 'cause I can't remember that there was like $50,000 spent on capital.
Yeah.
That stuff like that.
Stuff like that.
Versus certain, versus things.
Roofing, taping, you could even equipment, you could go back. And if you're looking at those, that sub total, look down at the footnote down below. And what we've detailed, if you're really looking at a, at a 10% reserve, you're looking at approximately a million dollars, 988,000 is where, where it should really be. If you're looking at 15%, you're really almost looking at 1.5 million. And with Standard and Poor's, if you're at the 15% level, they consider that healthy, you're actually getting some extra credit on the rating. Now, that's not a one-time shot of your reserves, it's something that, they're looking at a trend, they're looking to see that you're maintaining that. Through operations, they're looking at, you're not operating as, in other words, a deficit in each year, a single year that you're reducing those reserves. And then your debt service, they're not really considering those, but I wanted to include those to give you the total fund balance for each year, at the end of each year, where Then the last two schedules, the question came up about utilizing the lease rental bonds or GO bonds, wanted to provide your general obligation bonding capacity, that has a statutory debt limit, each school corporation, city and town has it, and it's basically your net assessed value divided by three times 2 percent, and that's your gross capacity. So right now, your gross capacity is 3,128,000, that you can have outstanding at any point in time. So from that, you need to deduct any outstanding principal amount of general obligation bonds, and currently you have about $1,085,000, and that's really your pension bonds that are outstanding. So right now, you could issue $2,043,000 in general obligation bonds. So if you're looking at that, another $5 million project, that's where you'd have to, anything higher than that, you would have to look to the building court and issue lease rental or first mortgage bonds. And then on the last schedule, which shows you basically the running, as you're paying off the 18 bonds, yeah, the, the general obligation bonds, those pay off in 21, that basically gives you your remaining debt capacity, and you can see as you pay off those, that principal amount on both of those bond issues, you're throwing that back to your gross capacity. And we usually look, the pension bonds are probably an exception because corporations had to extend those out further. We usually recommend if you're utilizing general obligation bonds, pay those off on a shorter term, so you gain that capacity back. It's a lot simpler, which I think most of you have been through the process, the lease rental bonds going through the building court, it's a, it's a longer process, and it's also, it's also more costly to issue those.
Kurt, you've been with us a long time, based on what you know about the corporation and where we're at today, which one of these models makes the most sense to you for delta to pursue?
I would pursue both of them. I would, I would, I would probably recommend moving the solar project to give you that, you have that option if you're moving forward. But then also, to replenish your, your cash reserves, I would recommend issuing whatever that amount that you decide on, general obligation or taxable bonds to get that repayment for prior capital expenditures.
So we do the GO bond now, if we can, and then the solar would go in 2021?
We'll move, we'll go through that process during the year to move that over, probably anytime during the year, I wouldn't wait till the end of the year, but go through that process, so that's moved over to the, to the debt service.
So the biggest impact, the biggest impact would be the GO bond, right away, of course, that we need to look at?
I think if the taxable bond, pardon, let's go back and look at historic projects, practically is just a route going back and looking through expenses and identifying items that could be potentially rolled out, yes.
Technology expenses, do you know that?
Pardon?
Technology expenses?
It can, it depends on, I'd probably look at, you basically can, because you're not really looking, you're not really looking at, at financing something that has a useful life, you're gonna finance it for five years, it has a useful life of two years or one year, we wouldn't recommend that. But in this case, you're going back just to reimburse yourself, so it really wouldn't impact that. So you can look at, you can look at computers, you could look at, if it's hardware that you're, for the network, you could also look at those.
Questions? More questions?
And the only thing I'll mention is, taking a look at where you're gonna land, the sooner you find out where you're gonna land by the end of the year, if it's something that you have to react to for your imbalances with that repayment of that temporary loan, the sooner you have that, the better. And then I would look at the tax warrants for 2020, and you can, like I said, you can go through the bond bank, Mr. Wrong and I have talked about the bond bank, or you can go to the open market, probably recommend going through the bond bank to get in their program. And then, the last item, I jotted some notes down, it's just looking at the budget, cash flow, looking at pro forma, where are you looking at salaries, benefits, looking at each of the accounts, where you're gonna be in 2020.
One more time here, on the GO bond, taxable, how soon can we start that? I mean, is this something we can do to start putting into process yet this year?
I would recommend that.
So we're already similar, meaning we need to be?
What I would recommend is, and I also talked to Mr. Long on my, on my drive, drive here, we, we talked about it, we thought a, a meeting, get a meeting scheduled, and we'd call it a working group meeting, and to talk about these items, just to get everything in place, and probably have two board members attend that meeting also, we thought it'd be informative, so they can kind of relay everything to the group.
Building work members?
What? No.
Two support members.
Better numbers. And getting that scheduled, and probably get that scheduled December.
And, and then that would involve you and also then?
Ice Meller.
Ice Miller.
Ice Meller, and Mr. Nick.
I don't know if I should say this out loud, but I think one big key to this is, we cannot use bond money as income. I think that's, there's been a pattern of that here, where we've used GO bonds, we've used that money to spend in, in, you know, for education and operations, and, and we cannot do that, so.
So the money that you go back and recoup from past projects and whatever, does that have to land in the operation fund, or can that?
That could, what I would recommend is to have that, you would deposit that to whatever fund it was paid from, if it was general or, but you would, the initial deposit would go there, and then basically you could move that money to the rainy day. And what you can do is take a look at your rainy day resolution, and that really controls how money can be spent out of the rainy day. So that may be something you may wanna revisit, if that needs to be revised or updated, that would be the other thing to take a look at.
Any other questions for Mr. Pleasure?
But also to answer your question, we want, we wanna get that cash in all those budget, all those funds, just so it shows that we have reserves in those funds for, for the future and for your, for your bond rating.
And I think now you've got the flexibility, you can almost lead it in the operations, because you have the flexibility to transfer now. So if you need it in the education fund, you can move the money. And the other thing I think that this will, this will help you also is, you know, the 15%, the maximum, the maximum transfer from education to operations, this will add sort of little flexibility moving forward, so you can stay within that parameter.
Thank you, Mr. Pleasure. Give your time.
If you, if you have any questions?
I'm sure we will.
I'm sure we will. Are you gonna be available, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, we got, we got some bills today for the debt payments, and they don't jive with our schedule, so I just, I just wanted to, I wanna run that.
Did you look on Gateway, or?
I'm looking at these that you, you know, that you provided, but the totals that they're asking for don't necessarily match what the schedule says, that's what, that's what I wanna sort of.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
All right.
Thank you. Hey, C, superintendent search process, Mr. Rose?
Yep.
Would you go through the process and so forth?
Sure. It actually, Mr. Pleasure was a school board, and just went, just went through that search or something, did Bill Deminsky work with you guys on that?
Yes, he did.
Okay, so we have, how, we've done a kind of a 10-step process, it's not terribly complicated, it can take probably about 70 to 90 days, depending on how long you decide to spread it out, but I think I sent to all of you what we did at Knox School Corporation, for example, so I would, whenever you decide to start that timeline, whether that's January or you can wait for probably just March if you really wanted to, we've worked with you to develop marketing materials, just general information about your school corporation, the size of the school, types of employees that would be working directly with the superintendent, how many school buildings, information about the tax base, that type of information. Then, once that's kind of agreed upon with, with the board, we would ask, basically give about, the first part of that process would be about two weeks, and for, there'll be a three-week process where application, applicants can submit their applications, we recommend that they just kind of go through us and we can go through those. The only ones that we would really weed out would be ones that are obviously not qualified, they don't, they don't have whatever necessary licensing or things like that. We're gonna give you a big binder of all of the candidates, Knox, I don't remember how many it was, it was probably 15 to 20 applicants, and we'll give you time then to go through that. This one that you did for Knox, Bill gave them four days, but I can see maybe extending that to maybe a week or something like that for you to go through that. Then, in that, that week timeline that you guys have to look at the applicants, you'll narrow that down to people you definitely wanna interview for the first round of applicants, I mean, that can be as many people as you want, and hell, you don't wanna get it more than seven or 10, I don't know, Kurt, how many did you guys interview in that first round?
I think it's six.
Okay, so, and that's probably a, a good number. First round of interviews, you wanna knock that out relatively quickly, try to do that in a couple nights, then you can do second round of interviews, typically the second round is gonna be a little more thorough, you're gonna narrow that down to maybe two or three people, you're gonna want them to do some really specific, maybe PowerPoints or presentation about what, what their plan would be for the school corporation. And then after that, you make the decision to make a proposal on the contract. Now, since Mr. Prowse had been superintendent, you know, the statute changed about superintendent contracts, that same process will apply if you're hiring a new, a new superintendent. So you have to post it, have a public meeting, allow them a public comment, and then not less than seven days after that, can the board vote on that. So, whole process for Knox, I added up, was about 72 days, I can see that if you wanna be safe and give yourself a little more time, maybe closer to nine weeks, so. And the timeline that they did started in April, and the superintendent began in August, so obviously just gonna back that out, so that's why I suggested they work from January to March to start that process.
Kurt, did you include community members, anybody on your, on your search team, if you went through that?
We had some, we had some administrators and some staff that are just paid, documented.
Any other questions about that at all?
So Nick, you've indicated that this is a service you offer, but what's the actual real cost involved, I mean, it's built in, so to speak?
I, I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of?
It's not a, again, it's not a package price, but?
Right.
Can you, can you give us a sense for, like Knox, what, you know, Knox, but what, would it Knox actually spend in the process?
I think I had indicated, I mean, we're just gathering the information and sharing it with you, versus, I think, and I'm not downplaying what some of the university professors can do, but I mean, I think they charge you a pretty sizable amount.
No, they don't.
They, they don't?
They, they basically, if you go through the university team, they'll charge just their expenses, so in other words, their travel expenses coming up, and we utilize them for the process, yeah. And there's, there's other groups out there also, probably the fee a little more, probably 6,000 to 8,000 for their services to really, they go through and kind of vet the, all the applications that are received, and then?
Their roles are more active.
Yeah, and, and they make, they make a recommendation, they may bring six to eight for the board that more to consider.
And six to 8,000 in the scheme of, I mean, with superintendents doing, I mean, you can justify spending, spending that too.
No, no, I, yeah, I'm not questioning that part of it, it's really just more to, to be more open and transparent about what your fees will be and what, and this kind of thing, and what to anticipate.
We don't participate in the interview, I mean, I wouldn't recommend that we participate in that, so I mean, it's just the gathering of applications, it's really not.
Could you guys walk us through, making sure we get all the timelines and?
Yeah.
'Cause that stuff's critical.
Right.
Postings, legal notices.
Right. The legal notice you don't get into till you got that contract, I mean, you can do anything in terms of the, of the interviews and that process, however you want to do that. It's, it's when you finally decide that that person's gonna be your person, then you gotta post it, have it publicated.
And I'll add something else, and I know that any of the groups, the university group or, for instance, I'll, I'll say it's administrative assistants, they do the same thing, but what they'll do is, they'll, they'll go through all the applications, and they know a lot of these people, so they'll come to the board and they'll give you kind of a, an executive summary on each individual's, why they're not recommending them, or the ones that they're recommending, why, and moving forward. And I think that kind of, that kind of helps the board in the process, just getting that feedback.
And you're certainly welcome to do that, 'cause I, I think in my role, I don't like advising you on, oh, this person's good, or that, I, I don't think that's my role, so that's certainly an added value if you wanna bring them in. We, we also try to keep this very, very confidential, because these people are in jobs and they're applying to you guys, and so it's important that you maintain that, that's one of the buffers of using us that we can do that. Anything else to add, Kurt?
No, I, and I mean, you can, it's handled a lot of different ways, and then if you get an applicant that, that you know, that you want to interview, they'll definitely, they'll, they'll be brought before the board to interview them. And that was our case, and we ended up hiring, it was, it was, he was a associate, a high school principal, and left, he was superintendent for a couple of years, and he came back and interviewed, and we definitely wanted to interview him. Or if you have some people on staff that they have the licensing that they apply, then that's another thing to discuss for the board.
As we, we go through the search, and based off what you told us, if you go through this route, the people that we de-smacked, you'll notify them?
Yeah, we could certainly, yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Versus us, I mean, if you're?
I think that's a case I was kind of wondering about, was those administrative tasks that are involved in it. Clearly, that's the process way in the past, was they took care of all that.
Yep.
Is that something you guys also?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
It, it's flexible, I mean, you guys could decide on one person tomorrow, and then we're just doing the contract, I mean, we can do this however you want, so. But I do think probably good to get a timeline, you know, maybe at least an approximate start date, and then I can back everything from there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it has to be tonight, but maybe by the December meeting, definitely just to like plan that out, and we all know what the timeline will be.
Hey, we have an opening on the Board in Liberty Township, which we just need to discuss a little bit, how process of filling that. Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but you certainly have to ask for applicants from Liberty Township first.
Correct.
And then if no one shows an interest, we, we look elsewhere. When the officers met the other day? When the officers, officers met the other day, we kicked around some ideas, thinking that we need to kind of advertise this out there with the help of our friends from the comment, maybe, and, and a school website and whatever, and maybe hold it open until December 20th. And people would have, if there are anybody, if, when there's someone interested out there, that they would submit just a letter of interest to the corporation office here by December 20th.
First, interviews with those folks in January?
Both, well, probably.
He won't be at that first board meeting, so that doesn't give us time to fill it prior to that meeting.
Unless we had it.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be done that fast.
When, when is Mr. Trueblood's final?
30 minutes.
He can't fill it over that.
Yeah. So we probably, I guess, open it up to anybody, but we'll vet if there's any Liberty first, and then if not, then we'll take from the rest applicants. Is that what we're saying?
Right.
I mean, if we have like 15 people applying, there's three from Liberty, those three will be the ones we'll vet in there to interview everybody else, but we have nothing from Liberty that everybody else that applied would become part of that pool.
I think it'd be hard to ask if only you had one person apply from Liberty, I think.
You have to, no, but that's what I'm saying, is that as we have, open up the thing, we say, you know, December 20th, it should be anybody but the understanding that Liberty Township.
Wouldn't you open it up only to everybody after you find out there's no interest?
Well, you're on timeframe.
I understand, but I, I don't think you'd open it up to the entire corporation, all the townships, until Liberty has an opportunity to fill it.
Well, they would have first choice, because if anybody would apply, they would automatically go to the, the top of the list and cut the list off wherever it is, whether it's one or.
As long as that's noted, so submitting can use it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, needs to be spelled out, I think, because of the fact that we have 30 days for them to.
Because next year, that, that position's filled next year in general elections, so.
Right, for one year.
Yeah.
There had been some interest shown in Liberty Township.
Hey, I.
So, my, my gut feeling is we'll be able to fill it from Liberty Township, but.
Maybe our.
I'm thinking it'd be important you decide right now whether you're, if we're going to put it on the website and it's going to be in the paper, it probably ought to be very clear if you're asking for Liberty Township interest or if you're asking for corporation like interest.
I think that you have stated that, you know, my, this is just me, I think that you ask anybody interest but Liberty Township will have a first fill, fill anybody from Liberty Township. I'm just afraid as this, if we go till December 20th here, and say we don't get nothing, then we go, get into January before we do again, or in January the 10th, 15th, and that's just only 15 days to fill it. So, but if you have a pool of everybody and then you sort off, as long as we can explain that right, then you sort off the Liberty Township, if the two, three, or whatever, everybody understanding.
If we don't get anybody from Liberty Township, there will be applicants from it.
Right.
And we will have applicants.
Right.
It's just a matter of how.
And I'm okay, if, if we think we can do it, then just say Liberty you start with, and let's do, see, and go with it. But I would say if we.
The language is that it's a seat for the vacancy created in Liberty Township, so.
Right.
That implies it's somebody in that township, but.
Right.
Of course, somebody else could apply, so.
And if we're going to do that and strictly say Liberty, I would say let's move up to December the 15th. They have three weeks. They've already have an indication, it's already been put in the paper, so.
Debbie, that'll go in the paper this week?
Yeah, I'm working on that, yeah. I'm kind of going back and forth here, yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, then.
You have a wall of ours.
Liberty only.
And nothing else to do.
Let's, let's post it for Liberty Township, an opening for Liberty Township.
By?
Whoever, however you want to word that.
By December 15.
By December 15, yep. And a letter to the corporation office, a letter of intent to the corporation office here. Letter of intent.
Do you have a format you want to?
I would, I would make that December 16, because the 15 is a side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be available earlier.
Do you need any other information?
No, I just think that their address, their, their name and address, and I think that would put us then, the, make sure they're within the boundaries.
And they will interview with the entire trampoline?
Yes. So that's in last month. That's in a public setting, I remember.
Should be.
I remember attending.
Okay, so you know that, so.
Well, you're not hiring them.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you.
Anything else on the Township Board? Pre-K finances?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So when will you be making a decision? Are you going to meet on the 20th, or the 15th, or the 16th, or?
Bill won't, Bill will not officially be off until the 31st, it'll be January.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah.
So interviews will be set early January. It's the day of the first meeting, January, maybe January.
It's possible.
13.
13.
13.
Before the 10th.
Possible.
See, somebody's first meeting, may work out that way. Okay, E, pre-K finances. Mr. Rong, you want to?
I, I gave you, I gave you a handout, so currently we have, and Mr. Scheidler, at any point, if you want to correct anything I'm saying or add.
I'll listen.
Add to it. We have two teachers currently in the program and two aides, and that comes to roughly $195,000. The, what Mr. Scheidler and, and Mrs. Gill have been working on is, is getting the certification done for, is it a federal approval or a state approval?
It's state.
It's state. And, and I, I believe, what, we needed some kind of hot water?
Yeah, they were, they were there. It moved slowly, but it's, it's getting there. So basically, we talked about months ago, I think, previously superintendent talked to me in May, and I think I started working through this, but they just did a site visit and really the only bad thing was the water's not hot enough out of Camden to satisfy them. So there are some steps that Greg Morrow is looking into, and hopefully we'll rectify that. As soon as it's rectified, he will take my word, the guy from the state, that we have met all the obligations. He then will give me access to another person at the state to access funds the state has put aside for preschool programming, which should initially, once we get everybody qualified who does qualify, I think if the return is, if I recall off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure it was $85 per kid per week. Again, not every kid's going to qualify of the 32 that are currently in the program, but it's going to be more than we were bringing in at the very least to start. So I think I was telling Mr. Rong, again, I, I really thought we'd probably be already gathering funds in November. This to me looks like, once the water thing's rectified, maybe we're looking at January the first day where we can start to gather some funds. Again, it's not going to offset the 195, but it's at least going in the right direction. And, and I will tell you, by the end of the school year, the current school year, we believe we'll have advanced our accreditation within the preschool world to pathways, I forget the term, pathways to quality or something like that, which the state says, all right, 85, that's the low level, minimal coverage, we're going to actually start giving you 105, 110, 115. I think it might have been 115 per child per week. So these are all steps, part of that preschool grant. Again, things are kind of always moving, and you're kind of at the mercy of the state to a certain degree. But like I said, he was there last week, sat down with him for about two hours, he visited the classrooms, we had a lot of good things in place, his only thing was he took, he took the thermometer out. Oh, that's not nearly enough. So again, so Greg Morrow immediately got on that, because again, we know that's going to reverse the trend where we're just deficit, it's going to reverse it here at some point, hopefully sooner versus.
If, if we just use as a rough estimate that half of the students qualify, and it's not, it's not automatic for free and reduced, it's based on, on the income level.
Income of the families, but I believe it was, I think, when I threw 50%, that was a low estimate. I'm really believing it's going to be closer to 60, 65%. Right. But I'm not sure, this is where, again, the state, I think it falls back on the individual families to actually apply for it. So again, we got to push, so we're going to, my opinion sitting here, obviously for next school year, we need to have some teeth in the game where the condition of being in it is either, and I don't mean to misspeak, either you are applying for these refunds, if you will, and/or you're a cash participant and you're giving some money, because again, the district can't afford just to do this. I'm grateful the state finally said after a couple of years of giving the more affluent areas, the more heavily populated areas, first dibs at these funds, Carroll County with our modest population of 19,000 on a sunny day, finally got in with all the rest of the rural counties. So we're doing our due diligence, and we're getting there, but.
Is this retroactive back to the beginning of your?
I'm sure it's not. Never thought, never thought of asking that. I will ask, that's actually a great question. Maybe it is, you never know. It could be.
Well, if your, if your program wasn't certified.
That's true, so it didn't meet their requirements for accreditation.
There's that water thing.
Now, now, the one thing I do want to mention is that we do have a teacher retiring that's in this program, and, and I am told that, that you wouldn't necessarily have to replace a, this, in the program with a certified teacher, you could have multiple aides take that place, you'd have more one-on-one with the children, and, and you'd still.
Yeah, of course, pros and cons to each situation. It's definitely the one person.
Do we receive funding for pre-K special needs bill?
Yes, but it's very minimal. I mean, the grant is, I, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head now.
I just looked at the numbers today, it wasn't much per child.
No.
It's not enough to support the program, but we have to offer the program.
So Mr. Scheidler, this is not the 33,000 that we picked up through a grant?
My way pre-K.
Yes, this, this all runs together.
Okay.
So the, the goal behind that grant.
Right.
Was to ex, to expand capacity for preschool program. So when we expand capacity, we're trying to get to the low level of state recognition, which I think is L.L.E.P. status. And we're there, it's just a matter of getting the water hot enough. But we don't, we, but the grants would allow us to bypass the next couple of levels, and we'll be, I think, one of only, I think the second childcare in our whole county that's at a certain threshold, which again, that's, that's a nice little feather for our cap, but.
So that 33 was based off of a certain percent given by community also?
Yeah, that just had the five, that had the 5% matching grant.
Does that follow up though on some of these additional dollars we have to have that 5% or was that just the initial surge until we get into the next levels?
The, the, the preschool grant, the early capacity grant, which was around 33,000 to 34,000, was meant to, we, we hired a preschool aide, again, because you have to have a certain number of people, you have to, but it, it really got us an infusion of dollars for buying furniture and stuff like that. So as I sit here, honestly, my, my plan kind of would entail, because the board talked about expanding the opportunities a year or two ago, I'm hoping at the end of May, you know, we've taken a couple of steps, we've, we've got some funds going in, and we can actually look at the kids on the waiting list and actually offer a third, which will kind of narrow the deficit between what we're spending and what we're bringing in, so.
So if we look at, and I've thrown some figures out here, and actually, these kind of come in close, but if we sit there and said, because preschool or other schools are anywhere from $100 to $250, if you look at that chart.
At what timeframe should it?
Full, full, full time.
Week.
How often?
Oh, weekly, 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 yeah, weekly. And so, these dollars will say, again, to the point to getting skin in the game, that if they apply, we could subtract that off of a set rate that we have out here, right? I mean, that's, would be the purpose of that.
Yeah.
Are you saying cost sharing? I'm not sure I'm gathering exactly what we're headed there.
No, so if we look at saying, we're going to charge every student, we'll just say, I, my figure's $150.
Right.
Okay, knowing that we'd have to give some scholarships for the lower people that we're talking actually about here. The average.
So like a sliding scale for those?
A sliding scale, right, a scholarship. These dollars can be applied to that.
Absolutely, okay.
And so that's why I'm sitting there saying, at $150, then we support, we can support all that, that's here that's being done, plus help promote some others. As far as the, the hot water goes, has a filter that hasn't been replaced in 10 years. So now they're getting the, the flow is, is working. So, I mean, Mr. Morrow has done a great job there.
Yeah, he was on it right away.
I just want to make sure that that 33, that we're sitting there saying, you know, we, we're looking at these big things, that we don't need the matching 5%. That's actually something separate from this here.
It is separate.
Okay.
Totally separate, but they are interconnected.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the public understood.
But I think that's the thing, like when you guys talked a month or two ago, you know, the future of the program, obviously, we're going to need to sit down. So some changes will happen for January, I'm quite sure, I'll have to notify parents and stuff, but I think that'll be the start to some bigger things that start effective August, in, in my opinion, and whether it be two sections, three sections, sliding scale, yeah.
Because if you take the 195 and 34, 32, whatever's in there, that's about 57, 5800 per child, and that's about what we get to the state. So since the state cut us out on that funding, that's what we're trying to recoup, so that dollar amount still stays pretty consistent on a per, per, what we need to strive for.
Yeah.
Greg gave away that mixed-up agenda, it should take us over the hoop a little bit more.
So what was the temperature of the water?
I'd rather not say.
It was colder than the cold water.
What was coming out of Deer Creek or what?
It did warm a bit that way.
I'll be darned.
Yeah, he needed it at 100. I thought, well, surely we'll hit 100.
I asked another local school what they charged for their pre-K, and it was like $20 a day.
Probably $100.
They said childcare more expensive than that.
Sure. And it's, it's been a nice gesture the school district has done for several years, and I know, once we lost the funding, what, two or three years ago, I think we hoped and hoped, and again, finally we were able to get it. Again, this shows how long it's taken us to get to that point, so we're, we're almost there, and.
Well, I, I think this will be an ongoing discussion here in the next couple of months as we look at.
Yeah.
The finances and.
And also the structure, how you want, how you want the infrastructure.
Yeah.
But if you average $100 a student, you're talking about 100, around $150,000, which, which depending on what you do with the cost of your teachers, even if you would hire a certified teacher at a much lower rate, you'd be, you'd be much closer to covering the costs of the program.
And so is there still going to be, or is there a group that's working on that next step with all this, with that funding, with the cost sharing, thinking of sliding scale? Is there a group or any idea of some sort?
No, because you've said you've never done it, but if, if that's what.
So I think if we have any intention of making that available by next school year.
Yeah.
Early, early next year, we need.
I, I want to, I want to see the process, but yes, and I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic the, the heat thing, the hot water will be resolved in the next week. I can contact our contact from the state, he, as he said, he's going to take her word for it, he's going to be the next con, the next contact, and then I will immediately be calling her, because I know it's revenue generated, so that is a big priority, so yeah. So I'm hoping end of January, February, we start to kind of maybe have a meeting to start sketching what that looks like. You know, and Mary Anne's offered some great ideas. We don't have to be married to the way we're doing it. So, you know, we might want to change it up, so maybe we can absorb more kids, maybe instead of five days, and when we got some going three, some going two, if we need half day, we could, we could, we could, we could have a third section that's just half day to offer needs, to address the needs of some of our other kids.